Yeah, they're one of our.
After you left, I came down here to fix something and then I took it out in the gazebo. Only they had done me sign as well. No, they're something very happy here. They're already thinking about warm weather plants, stuff things on the grass, tied into the courtyard. It was, I was down here at like three thirty and I think pretty busy and then when I came at five thirty for this, it was pretty busy too.
Sprinkles are on your card.
All right, we call over the meeting tonight here at the Planning Commission Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. The first item here on our agenda is a roll call.
Mr. Duffey?
Here.
Mr. Mahouson?
Present.
Mr. Sarah? Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Okay, first thing is submit the February ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes for approval. Anyone have any questions or a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from February ninth, twenty twenty-two.
You have a motion? I hear a second. Oh, second. You have a second? Call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any opposed? Mr. Bowles has abstained. All right, first matter of our meeting here is adjudication hearing for application number two-two N C P C dash zero zero zero-three at thirteen oh-one East Maple Street, North Canton, Ohio. Conditional use permit to install modular panel walk-in freezer on the east rear side of the food bank building. At this time, if anyone from the representative for this project would like to speak?
I'm the operations minister.
Okay.
Contractor could be here.
If you could go to the podium and anybody that wishes to speak tonight, please state your name and address and please speak clearly into the microphone.
My name's Rob Sockdale, fifty-eight thirty-three Glen Drive, Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. All right, yes, we'd like to put a walk-in freezer on the back of our building next to the walk-in cooler that's already there. And contractor assured me that he sent you everything you need to know. He had to go to a funeral, so he couldn't be here tonight. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to have this because we serve, well, we served six hundred and ninety-seven families this past Saturday with food and we do that monthly. So the freezer is a great addition to our property.
Any other? No, Martin, if you'd like to say anything from the city?
Thank you. The property is located in the Parks and Institution. It's located within the three hundred feet of the residence, which is the reason we're here tonight to consider the conditional use. The structures that exist on the property have been permitted and have been operating for some time. We have reviewed this with the appropriate departments. Fire department particularly has reviewed it. This is consistent with the ordinances and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commission members? Quick question, what's the noise level of the freezer?
Well, it's an electric motor, so it's not very loud at all. We've never had any complaints about the refrigerator cooler about eight feet from it where this new one will be. Neighbors have never said anything about it.
Great, thank you. Any other commission members? Any, anybody else with the public or audience would like to speak on this issue? Okay, there's no other questions from commission members at this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve as submitted. A second.
Motion and a second. Call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the meeting is the application number two-two N C P C dash zero zero zero-three at one three oh-one East Maple Street, North Canton, Ohio. The general development review to install a modular panel walk-in freezer on the freezer on the east rear side of the food bank building. So this is for the development plan of this, of the conditional permit we just approved. Martin, any other comments from the city? I think we've probably covered this.
Right.
Okay.
That recommends approval.
Okay. Any other questions from commission members? All right, at this time, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve application number two-two N C P C dash zero zero three.
I will second. A motion and a second and call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda, I will have to recuse myself from this item, so at this time, Mr. Bowles will take the meeting over and I will exit to the next room. All right, can you hear me all right? Is that all right?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. All right, so the next item on the agenda is item number six. Application number two-two N C P C dash zero zero two, parcel number one zero zero one zero, one nine eight, Market Avenue, North, North Canton. This is a zoning amendment from O B District to G B dash B District. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Go to the podium and please state your name and address and begin your presentation, please.
Thank you. Lewis Altman, twenty-five fifty-five thirty-fourth Street, Northeast, Canton, Ohio.
Jake Miller, twenty-five fifty-five thirty-fourth Street, Northeast, Canton, Ohio.
Keith DeLasky, forty-four fifty, Belton Village Street, Northwest, Canton, Ohio.
Harrison Zoldan, twenty-five fifty-five thirty-fourth Street, Northeast, Canton, Ohio, four four seven zero five. Good evening, Mayor Wilder, Acting Chairman Dalpas and members of Planning Commission. I'm here on behalf of Altman Property Management, the applicant, also known as A. Altman Company, regarding the proposed zone change, parcel number one zero zero one zero one nine eight. For those of you who may not be familiar, we're a sixty-five-year-old family-owned commercial real estate company based here in Canton, Ohio, and since inception have developed and managed over one million square feet of commercial real estate, most of which has been retail-focused, and many of our projects have been in and around Stark County. You can see here some of the projects we've done in the past and you may be familiar with some of them. For example, the Akron Children's Hospital here in North Canton, and our recently completed Chipotle and soon-to-open Pulp Juice and Smoothie Bar on North Market Street. So we not only have extensive experience, but an enormous amount of passion for exactly the kind of project that we're excited to present to you tonight. The site we are discussing is an approximately five-point-eight acre parcel on Market Avenue, located in between Windstone Circle and Kingscope Circle. The property is currently zone O B or office business, and we are proposing a rezone to G B dash B, which is general business. And the purpose of this is to enable the site for future development that will include retail, dining, and service businesses that can serve the neighboring residents and our community beyond. I'm going to share more about our proposed future development shortly, but first, I want to address the allowable uses in the G B dash B zone and how they compare to our planned uses for the property. The G B dash B zone includes many allowable uses that we believe are an ideal fit for this site, but a handful that we don't think make sense due to its proximity to the neighboring residential neighborhoods. And those uses we do not intend to include in our future development plans. Therefore, as the developer, we are going to elect to restrict the types of businesses, specifically de-restrict the types of businesses allowed on this site now and in the future. Specifically, the restricted uses that we propose are tattoo and body piercing business, tobacco, vape, cannabis, and C B D-focused retail, a funeral home or mortuary, a self-service laundry facility, any and all adult uses, vehicle and farm equipment sales, gasoline station, automobile service station, specifically those where work is performed onsite, and car wash. We're certain that these restrictions will allow us to achieve our goal of developing a project that is visually appealing, attracts high-quality tenants, and is a welcome asset to its surroundings. With the necessary zone change, our plan would be to develop approximately thirty thousand square foot high-end retail center, which would include a variety of shops, services, and restaurants. Now, our preliminary plan contains a mix of single and multi-tenant buildings, some of which, as you can see, are outfitted with drive-throughs and some outdoor dining space. And we're calling this new development Market Cones. To go a little deeper into the preliminary site plan, you can see from this view roughly how the site could be laid out, as well as how it may fit within its existing surroundings. And I'll point out that there's multiple points of egress. This is a preliminary site plan, but multiple points of egress, two of which you can see off of Market Avenue, and a third which is off of Windstone Avenue, Windstone Circle. Here's an additional view where again you can see how it fits within the existing landscape and can get a view of the mix of the single and the multi-tenant buildings, as well as the different features such as some of the buildings that have drive-through capacity and others with some outdoor dining space. I want to point out some of the design features that we believe are pretty important here. And if I was a little closer, I could, I could point to you, but I'll do my best from here. In the rear of the property, you can see the intentional placement of the retention pond, the elevated landscaping buffer, which is actually made up of two components, both the elevated mounding and the tree and additional landscaping on top of that, and then the fence. And these features are intentionally in place to insulate the commercial property from the surrounding residential property. And to quantify this, from the rear of our parking lot to the edge of the Stark Parks Trail, which sits in between this commercial lot and the Washington Square Neighborhood, is about eighty feet. In addition to that, we've got the trail and some Stark Parks ground, as well as some trees that would further insulate that. And on the rear of the property, that's the shortest point. It gets longer as we head south. In addition, we plan to propose to Stark Parks that we tie our property into one of our favorite Stark County amenities, the Stark Parks Trail. And we're proposing to them that we do that in two places, one of which can be seen here, the trail connecting directly to our property with the addition of some bike rack, so that we can not only make the site accessible to motorists, but easily accessible to pedestrians and cyclists as well. Here is an eye-level view where you can get an idea of how the buildings may be spaced out, as well as the types of textures and materials we intend to incorporate into our final design. And we have a reputation for building high-quality, attractive projects that not only look good as soon as they're completed, but look good long into the future. And we have every intent to build on that reputation with this project. Now, we believe we can attract the types of tenants that we would all like to see here, not just by building a high-quality product, but by doing it in an ideal location. And you can see our property on that red star there is about ten minutes from Stark County's primary retail core, Belton Village, which means that it's far enough away for businesses that are operating in Belton Village to consider an additional location at this site. And for example, Chipotle is operating in North Canton as well as in Belton Village. There are some financial institutions with branches in both locations. And although there are a handful of others on that list, we're certain there are many more that would like to be. Now, we began our development process by seeking feedback from many members of the community, including those who live closest to the site. And over the past few months, we've had numerous conversations with the H O A leadership of both the Washington Square Neighborhood and the villages of Washington Square Neighborhood, both which are contiguous to this site. And we've discussed our proposal, we've answered questions, and to the best of our ability, we've addressed the concerns that we can answer at this time. And in addition to the individual conversations we had, we held two community meetings at First Christian Church, the latest which was attended by over seventy residents, and many of them voiced their excitement about our proposed project, as well as their confidence in our team to execute responsibly as promised. I want to thank everyone that took time to be at those meetings and also the residents that are here tonight in support of our project. And I also want to read a message by a neighbor who couldn't be here tonight, but sent this to me. A Mr. Bobri Olfi, whose home is located directly next to our proposed site, about as close as you could possibly get to the site. This message was sent Tuesday, March first, from Bobri Olfi to myself, Harrison Zoldan. My name is Bobri Olfi. I live at two zero three-six Penhurst Circle Northeast, which is the last house on the cul-de-sac and the closest house to the property that A. Altman Company wants to develop. I have seen the plans and researched the company and types of buildings they build, as well as the businesses they allow in their buildings. I'm very impressed with the proposed development and their use of a water feature, trees, and fencing to buffer my property from the development. I am one hundred percent behind their development of the property, and I believe my property will benefit significantly by being better insulated from the noise of Market Avenue, parentheses, State Route forty-three. Please contact me with any questions. Sincerely yours, Bobri Olfi. We believe that with our experience, along with all of your support, that we could take this long vacant property and turn it into an asset for our community for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, does that conclude the statements from the applicant?
Yes.
Good. Martin, any, any comments in the city at this time before I open it up? Any comments from the attendees?
Thank you. Yes, this is an exciting opportunity, exciting project presented. A. Altman has been very responsive to the city's comments in here and very transparent, as shown here in the presentation, where a lot more information is presented here to give us a better idea of where they're headed with the project. With that, I would like to make this opportunity available for Mr. Diorio to provide additional comments on this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, the chair's indulgence. We're very excited at the city for this opportunity. We recognize that this property is a, a non, what I would call a non-performing asset for the community. And our objective here, and with, as a mayor who may want to comment after me, that our focus has been to take, you know, parcels or that are not contributing to their potential for both property taxes, which affect the school and provide them with additional revenue, but also with our police, fire, and EMS, because our levies are attached to those property values. So the more property value there is with those structures, the better off it is for everybody, because we spread the tax base around. And we recognize how hard this is in this environment, you know, to go from, you know, office business, you know, the Altman Hospital, no relation, different spelling, you own this property or owns this property and... this property or owns this property, and, you know, maybe, you know, decades ago, there was some thought of a medical office center there of some kind, but, you know, we have to look at what the landscape brings us today, and, you know, it's largely retail around there. It makes sense that there would be retail, but not just for any developer. And I've said this before, counsel, that, you know, the A. Altman Company, in my estimation, with the developers that we've worked with, is a gold standard. They've come in, sat with us months and months and months ago about the potential, what we felt were some concerns and things that they needed to address, and offer us, you know, guarantees. We recognize that the Altman, the Altman Company holds their properties for a long time, family-run business, new generations coming in, and that this isn't the type of developer that is looking to build it and flip it to somebody else. So we think that that gives them the credibility of bringing in the right kind of tenants and making sure that the properties stay good, but, you know, we had concerns, and we asked about, you know, what happens thirty, forty years from now? Maybe you're all, we're all dead, or something else happens to us that these properties get, you know, we want more assurances, and they came up with this idea, and they were willing to work with that to help the residents make sure that we didn't, you know, end up with a, you know, a tire store out there north of Washington Square, because we don't think that would work. Noise level, just the whole effect and look, aesthetics are very important to that area. So development is going to come, you know, and it's what form do you want it to be in? And I think that this is the best of all scenarios, and what we don't want to, you know, see happen is where, you know, this great kind of development is discouraged, property sits vacant for even longer periods of time, eventually an owner gets so tired of holding it that they'll sell it at any reduced price, and somebody who wants to put in a less-than-desirable project will buy that up at a discount in order to maybe take a chance that they could get their, their development in. And so we think that this is that right time, and we support this project with all that we can. Mayor, did you want to add it for Chairman Zoldan?
Thank you, Mr. Zoldan. Yes, first of all, thank you for your very articulate presentation and taking it step by step. And the gold standard, I agree totally with the, with your business, and I think what we see before us is an opportunity, an opportunity to bring quality to our community, business, jobs, income tax for our schools, for our city, but most of all, I think it's going to benefit our citizens. And I'm, I'm excited for the project, and I'm excited to what I saw here tonight. The potential is there, the quality that's going to bring to, I think, the standard that we try to maintain in North Canton, and what we can provide for our residents and for our customers. And I see small business and some of your projected development there to attract that to our community. So, and again, we talked about the things that we wanted to discourage, and you covered some of those here tonight, so thank you very much. But for one of the most reputable businesses in Stark County, let alone in Ohio, and with what you've done for us in previous, with that control nurse hospital and other current projects that we have, I have all total confidence that this would be an asset to the community, an asset to that part of the city. I think it enhances the eastern part, the entrance coming into our city, and anybody coming down Market Avenue South, I can see them pulling into any one of those shops for a beverage, or for a meal, or for a product that's going to be offered there. So I am totally behind this, this project, and I would support it, or I do support it wholeheartedly. Thank you very much for a very eloquent presentation, one of the best I've ever heard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and any other questions from the city's administration? At this time, I'm going to turn the questions to the planning commission, and then what we'll do is we'll allow the, the audience to ask questions once we ask our initial questions, and then I'm going to come back to the planning commission and ask if they have any more questions. All right, so that's the process I'm going to follow. Oh, it's okay. All right? So with that, I'm going to ask for the slide that shows the, the current, the proposed zoning slide. I want to point some things out to everyone. All right, so not, is it that one? Yeah, right? Is there another one that looked like that, or was that it?
No, this is the zoning slide.
Okay. So the proposed zoning is, is the same zoning that is currently with the Washington Square Development. Is that correct, Martin? It's the same, same zoning designation?
I believe so. I'm pulling that map up here to verify it.
Right, so it's, it's, the, it's, the zoning that's there is similar to the one, to the property that just is to the south of that, which is made up of a series of small office buildings. So that's what we're looking at, we're looking at the same zoning as what is at Washington Square. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to any questions from the planning commission at this point in time.
We've got a question. Does the city plan on any additional signaling at either of those two entrances off of Market?
So as I understand, this is a state route, and ODOT controls this, this route here, so I don't have any further information on that as far as signals.
Okay, so there would not be any, Market is heavily trafficked. Some concern about signaling on entrance and exit?
Yes, although we have a lot more information here, as I mentioned, for this presentation, this will come back to planning commission, this will also get referred to ODOT once we have development plans and if there's any conditional use permit, so ODOT will have an opportunity to comment on this specific project.
Okay. Second question is, you mentioned a water feature that looked like a detention pond? Well, you described it as a detention pond. What, what is the feature?
That's correct. It is a detention, detention pond.
Okay.
Synonymous with what we refer to as the water feature.
And then if the, if the property were to be set, you had mentioned deed restrictions. I'm assuming that on sale of the property, those deed restrictions go away, or they're maintained?
That's correct. They would run with the land.
And following up on the water feature, I mean, is that always full of water, or is that only a stormwater runoff type feature?
Thank you. So it is a detention pond, so it won't be full always, it'll have capacity to take on new water. I want to mention that Keith Dialleski, our civil engineer, is present tonight, so if we have any technical, specific questions about the detention pond, I'd be happy to direct those to Keith.
And a procedural question. A motion that would be made would also be conditioned on the proposed restricted uses? How that?
That, that is correct.
Okay. And so the applicant is requesting a zoning change. If that happens, if that were to happen, they would obviously, and this is, the recommendation from the planning commission is going to go to the city council for, for approval and adoption. And then once they actually start the project, I think the plan will come back to the planning commission, correct? For, for, for further review.
Right, so as soon as this goes through the legislation process with council, we've discussed with the applicant that as it gets towards the end of the legislation process, they'll may start the next reviews for planning commission for any conditional use permits or development review plans at that point.
Just, so the current, question for the applicant, Mr. Zoldan. The current situation with the property is that you are not the owner of the property. It is owned by a third, a, a different party. Can you just explain to us what the current situation is?
Absolutely. Property is currently owned by the Altman Health Foundation. Again, no relation to our company, spelled separately, and we have an option to purchase the property from the Altman Health Foundation.
And the time, the timing of your development plan is what?
We expect if the proper zoning is achieved this year, that under ideal circumstances, we could begin construction later this year in two thousand and twenty-two, most likely begin construction in early two thousand and twenty-three, with approximately twelve months, twelve to eighteen months construction time.
Good. All right, thank you for that. Any further questions from the planning commission before I open it up to, to the public part of the meeting? Okay, good. All right, so if there is anyone in the audience who is willing to speak about the project, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and then we'll go from there.
I was born three oh seven Prairie Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. It is the goal really of all communities to bring employment to their community, and we all desire to have the highest level of employment that we can, with the highest salaries. I think the current zoning of office business, office building offers that opportunity. A zone change to GBB opens up a Pandora box of possible uses, and I'll detail those in a moment. The area is surrounded by residential. I would hate to see Market turn into a Cleveland Avenue, or if anybody's ever driven between Maslin and Canton, a West Tusk. This all brings signage, lighting, noise. Again, we want to have a chance for the highest level of good-paying jobs. You're taking us away if you do this. I appreciate their acknowledgement that we need to restrict some of these uses. There's probably like thirty-five added uses that you could use between OB and GBB. Offering to put those in deed restrictions is fine and dandy, but that gets forgotten. Somebody would have to go down to the, downtown Canton, the offices down there, and dig out the, the deed and see what's allowed and not allowed. It muddies the waters between a straightforward understanding of what you can do with the property or not. You can't just look at our zoning and understand that, the average citizen. It's a very nice presentation. I'm not disparaging the enterprise here, but I don't want to see all this signage and I'm concerned about all the curb cuts that will be all on Market, which adds to traffic and accident issues. I question whether it's even legal to have a entrance off of a residential street. Switching from OB to GBB allows residential units as an accessory to commercial use, banks for drive-throughs, which they admitted are going to have any number of drive-throughs, studios for instruction, dry cleaning, counter services now allowed, motels, hotels, mainstream media shop, photographic reproduction services, restaurants, outdoor dining, self-serve laundry facility, veterinary hospital with associated cages, runs and kennels, adult uses, which you've said you're going to restrict, but again, that's buried downtown five years from now, ten years from now, who's going to know? Automobile transportation, you've got parking as a principal use, lot or garage, vehicle farm implement, sales, lease, and rental facility, car washes, gas lane stations, automobile service stations, clubs, lodges, and other assembly halls, civic facility for public assemblies, daycares, adult and child, indoor recreation facility, motion picture and theatrical playhouse, places of worship, schools, public and private, business and trade schools. And then for accessory uses, you've got outdoor storage of goods and supplies. I mean, the, the, the possible Pandora box that's opened up here, and we're abandoning our hope and our goal to bring good-paying jobs, office jobs. Yes, the original intent for the property has changed by the original owner, but let's don't give up on that goal. That whole Washington Square is getting saturated with retail. Why don't we hold out for good quality, paid jobs, and retain what we have there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Would the applicant like to address any of the concerns that Mr. Osborne brought up? You don't need to, it's just a question.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay, good. Any other, any other comments from the, from the Iets? Come up to the podium, please state your name, place, and address.
My name is Linda Miller, and I am, I live at nineteen twenty-eight Windstone Circle Northeast. I am in the Washington Square Villas, and I serve on the Villas Board. I'm very excited about the new development that might be built at Market Avenue. Altman Company is a very reputable company, and actually from our own community, which is very nice. They're planning to build something on the property to serve and enhance our community. This is a real plus and a positive endeavor for North Canton City. My neighbors and I have met with the Altman Company representatives on two occasions. They met with the Washington Square Villas homeowners on Penhurst, which is directly behind the Market Commons property. And as you heard, somebody even sent a letter, and he's thrilled to death. The developers gave an excellent presentation of their plan and asked for input, as well as answered numerous questions. In addition, the group met again with the homeowners on Windstone Circle, and again allowed for questioning and input. After listening to two presentations, I feel comfortable that the developers are meeting all standards and then some to meet the needs of our homeowners association, and as well as meeting the requirements for the city. I personally highly support the Market Commons endeavor. Another neighbor gave me a letter as well. Is it okay if I read that?
Please, it's okay.
Okay, this one is from Sue Seifert. She is also a board member for Washington Square Villas. She says, and I don't have her address, I'm sorry. "I have attended the meeting that the Altman Company had set up with the Washington Square Villas and the Washington Square homeowners. Having been in real estate business for thirty years, I was very impressed by their respect for the homeowners and wanting to let us know and see before starting development what their site plans were about. They asked for input and received many questions, which I believe were answered honestly. I am glad to have a four-generation reputable and respected firm building a development that will enhance our community, and with tenants the area will enjoy." And that is Sue Seifert.
Great, thank you. Just one last question for you, real quick. If you could point on the map, what the development is where you live versus where the other one? Is it the orange, or is it the, the yellow?
Okay, we are right back in here.
Okay.
And the gentleman that wrote that other letter lives right here.
Mr. Olfi, right?
Correct.
All right, great, thank you for that, this gentleman, I appreciate that. Any other questions from the public? Could state your name and address?
I'm asked down first.
That's fair.
My name is Peggy Pelcher, and I live at nineteen fourteen Windstone, on the same street that Linda lives on, in the Washington Square Villas, and I serve as the Washington Square Villa President. We have We have met with the Altman Brothers several times, and we're very excited to have them build their plaza on the vacant lot on Market Avenue. I feel it's an asset to our neighborhood, and it's a great asset to North Canton. I've lived in North Canton for 20 years. I absolutely love it. We love the neighbors, the place we can go to have coffee with our friends, and hopefully this will bring another place that we can go and have coffee with our friends. The meetings with the neighbors, which Linda explained, were several times. All were very, very positive. But I am in total support of the new development that the Altman Brothers have planned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One last opportunity for any of the public comments from the audience. All right, so if none, if no further questions, I'm going to turn it back to the planning commission. Any other further questions that you may have?
One more question, just for clarity. The A. Altman Company would be developing, owning, and leasing the buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
That's correct.
So you have direct control over screening of tenants that go into each of those, one of the businesses or franchises?
That's correct. Direct control and responsibility of all aspects of the development.
Any questions, Brian?
No.
I'm going to address something that Mr. Osborne brought up. And this kind of goes beyond, I think, the scope of the commission, but I think it's relevant because we're in a post-pandemic economy. The difference between, you know, office and retail right now is a little, is, is starting to get a little bit very different. For example, a lot of corporations right now are, have embraced something called hybrid work, where you work one or two, a couple of days a week in your office, which is, which is your place of address. And it's also, you also work from home. Right now, the way that your income taxes are divided, you, depending on what you, what you declare, and I'll use my, my example for, for, for the case of this situation. I pay three days a week to the city of Cleveland. I pay two days a week to the city of North Canton. All right? The thing about retail is that those jobs are right there all the time. All right, you cannot do a retail job from your home. It's highly unlikely. So this is a dynamic that I think that exists. I don't know if the future's going to hold. It may change. Let's see. Legislation may change. But I think it's, it's something to, to point out. And, you know, the, depends on when you, you know, when those, those income taxes come in, I think that's just an important point to point out. So it probably goes beyond the scope of our planning commission, but it's something I think is relevant, something I think they have a lot of experience on. And then the other thing too about this site is, is that the property is in the city of North Canton, but it's in plain local schools. So there's a little bit of a differentiation. So I moved here over 25 years ago, and I still don't understand why the school districts and the city and townships don't match up, because in Pennsylvania it's completely different. But it's still, it's still a head scratcher for me. So I apologize for that statement. But again, I think it's relevant. So if no, no further questions from the planning commission and no further questions from the audience, I am going to entertain a motion on application number 22 NCPC dash 0002. All right, and just a quick question before we, if, if there is a motion. When we go vote on this, because we have two members that are not on, not in attendance right now, do we need a 3-0 vote or is it 2 to 1?
You would need a 3-0 vote.
Okay, all right, good. I appreciate that, that clarification. I will now entertain a motion on the application.
I want a motion to approve application number 22 NCPC 0002. As submitted. Is there a second?
Is that, should that be? Do you, do you want to amend that to include the proposed restricted uses?
With the restricted uses, correct.
Uh, second to that motion.
And I'm actually going to condition it on the transfer to the Altman Company. All right, so it's specific to them. All right, so just I'll reread the, the motion for, for the record. So there's a motion on the floor to approve application number 22 NCPC dash 0002, as submitted, subject to the inclusion of certain proposed use restrictions for Market Commons and subject to the transfer to the A. Altman Company. Do I have a second?
Second there.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. That's okay.
Mr. Volus?
Yes.
Mr. Mahesson?
Yes.
Mr. Rele?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We'll call in the chair back in and finish this, or?
I just text Eric.
Okay. Right, good, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your input and your participation. All right, if there's nothing else tonight, the next thing I need to attend is to adjourn the meeting. I entertain a motion?
Motion to adjourn, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.